Okay, I've got two o'clock, a little bit after actually, and so I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a call meeting, special call meeting of the Board of Trustees, Weatherford College. And today is Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-two. It's two P M or a little bit after. We're in the community room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building, which is located at two twenty-five College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, to consider and act on the following and the posted agenda here. Where Agenda Item Number One, the meeting has been called to order, and I'll ask Mr. Baker if he would give the indication.
Yes, sir. Please bow with me. Laura, we're thankful again for today. We are thankful for our board and everyone in this room that cares about this college and our students. We do pray for rain, not only for our college but for our entire area. Please be with the board as they deliberate and help us have a great start to a new year. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Baker, let's stand up and I'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Be seated. So we'll move to Agenda Item Two, Public Comment for Individuals Not on the Agenda. Where do we stand on that? See nothing, and so we'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, Budget Workshop. This would be Dr. Kentrell. How are you today?
I'm good.
Thank you, ma'am.
How are you?
Good.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this. This is something that my area and as well as the whole college has spent a lot of time on during this last eight or nine months. In front of you, you'll have two different packets. One, I know, is the budget that was emailed to you earlier, and then one is the PowerPoint that I'll be presenting today, which I'm going to really speak from this PowerPoint and the summary page on top of the budget. If there's any specific question in the budget that I don't touch on, feel free to ask at any time. I asked Dr. Farmer for about thirty minutes, would be okay, and he looked at me and he says, oh, or less. And so if I slip over an item or two and you all want to know something about it, you call me back and I'll talk about it. And I'll tell him it's your fault, not mine. The two thousand twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget is presented to you all as a balanced budget. It changes on a daily basis, and as soon as it's adopted, it'll start changing again, I'm sure. Revenues and expenditures at this time total seventy-three million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. That is a decrease of about twelve million dollars. Actually, with the CARES Act funds pulled out, we're actually four million, nine hundred and four, seven thirty-nine greater in the operating dollars over the CARES funds. Is that plain as mud to you? Dan's looking at me like he doesn't fully understand. We had a lot of CARES funds last year, about twelve million dollars worth. And when you pull those funds out, we're actually four million dollars more in our budget this year than we were in the operating dollars. This budget was developed in support of the twenty-one, twenty-six revised Weatherford College Mission Statement and strategic goals that were adopted by the Board of Trustees in January of this year. Moving ahead, the summary sheet right here is presented. This year, we had seventy-three million, five hundred and sixty-two. And I'm going to start in the beginning talking about the revenues. I'll try to touch on all of the revenues to let you know where we are and how those have increased or decreased in some areas and what we're thinking about for the coming year. And then I'll touch on the expenditures that created the majority of entries to the budget. The review of the revenue sources here. When you think about it, this is a second year of a biennium. So there's not been a lot of changes in all areas because basically appropriations stay the same. The student aid was almost the same. There wasn't a lot more student aid. And those, I'm talking about the federal dollars such as Pell Grant, College Work Study, and S E O G. They were virtually, Stafford loans were up slightly, but not enough to really discuss. Our operating grants right now appear to be down. But I'll tell you that right now. When you look at the operating grants, and last year the CARES funds were included in those to make that ten million. So we're down at two million, eight seventy. But there will be other grants to come along. And I don't think that grant that we accepted last week is included in on this. But it's just as soon as we get finished with this, adopting this one, that will be adjusted and put in there as well as any other grants forthcoming. There will be, I know the workforce area is working on several, so that area will go up. The student aid, I told you already that there wasn't a lot of change. There was a lot of money that went out, about five million dollars to student funds for CARES. But the other ones such as work study and all those remain virtually the same. Tuition and fees were up, and I'll discuss those a little bit. Tuition and fees were up, and I'll discuss those a little bit. A net increase of a million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars has been added to the budget. And that is reflective of the enrollment increase that we had last year. We budget flat on enrollment for this current year that we're in and did not budget an increase of any. Dr. Farmer was telling us a little bit earlier today, it looks like we're up now. And that's to be rejoiced and thankful for, but we have not made any adjustments for that. The rate increase varying from seven to nine percent also affected and caused the tuition to be increased to be in three fifty-five. When you're looking at this sheet, this graph, the graph's only really your local taxes and tuition and fees in your second year or biennium are you going to see a lot of difference there. Those are our only real of the three areas. Appropriations are the same every two, for a two-year period. And so this is the year we want our tuition and fees to go up in our count year. So we'll be sure in that appropriation we boosted this next year off of that, hopefully. Local taxes showed to be a good increase on there. And then the others are virtually decreased or a little flat there. Auxiliary increases are up, but that has to do a whole lot with the institutional enrichment fee that falls in that area also. Discussing the local tax revenue increase, we will have three million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars based on the proposed rate at this time. I'll move on a little bit into that, a little bit. Having a hard time. I'm backwards here is what I think I am. I'm trying to look. The two thousand twenty-two total taxable value certified on July nineteenth is nineteen billion, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. That includes frozen values, the three billion, new construction of a million, pollution control and energy storage. And then the two thousand twenty-two frozen levy of home sales is two million, eight hundred thousand. The two thousand twenty-two certified value represents eleven percent increase over the two thousand twenty-one certified values of seventeen billion, nine twenty-three, six eighty-one. I'm sure, I don't know how many of you all familiar with all of the calculations. This is the second year of the no new rate, tax rate is calculated. It was calculated at point one one, six, four, four, nine. Last year's adopted tax rate was point one, two, two, four, seven, six. The recommended rate for two thousand and twenty-two is point one, two, four, seven, six. In other words, we're not recommending an increase in rate at this time. That represents a five point two percent increase over the no new revenue rate. The total tax levy for two thousand twenty-two will be twenty-three million, eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fourteen. We normally budget at ninety-eight percent, just for conservative reasons and to make sure that all is collected. This equates to twenty-two million, six twenty-seven. The recommended rate of point one, two, two, four, seven, six will be sufficient to fund the twenty-two, twenty-three budget and will not exceed the voter-approved tax rate of point one, two, three, one, nine, six. That voter-approved tax rate is your eight percent above that no new revenue rate. And so that, it's about right in the middle there is where it was adopted, where it was proposed.
May I ask, do you have questions or comments as we go?
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
So to answer a question that might be posed to us is, so our tax rate is going to stay the same, but basically that's driven by eleven percent increase in taxable values from last year to this?
Right. Absolutely. That's a trend of Parker County taxable values over the last, since two thousand and four, over the last twenty years. And it's grown steeply there. Okay, Larry, you may have to help me here. There we go. This is a schedule. It shows a bar graph of the average in the state. Last year I showed you all in two thousand twenty-one year. And the way the state gives these figures is they're a year off from us. Actually, we're in the twenty-two adoption right now. But the twenty-one figure, we were at point one, eight, oh, seven, oh, was the state average, which shows you that blue bar there and how we brought down to the red bar, which is Parker County. We're quite a bit under. We're like not in the state lowest right now. We did gain just a little ground from the year of two thousand and twenty when we went up to the point nineteen, oh, one, two. Oh, or the state average went up, and we went up to the point one, two, five, three, six, but we soon lowered it down to point one, two, two, four, eight in two thousand twenty-one. And this year we're proposing the point one, two, two, four, eight. Any question on those? This shows all the colleges in the state, the next page, and it talks about all the different, and their M and O rates, their debt rate, and total tax rate, and the state ranking of those rates. We fall number thirty-seven in the state as far as low tax rates. And I think that's exactly where we were last year. This was last year. Right now, we're looking at probably staying close to the same, maybe a year before we were thirty-seven. Also available for all of you are the net assessed valuations for all of those. Most of the other colleges that are that low in rate that we are are very much larger than our assessed valuation, which shows that they're bringing in quite a bit more funds. It's, I know the board, I mean, we strive to raise that rate to help with them, provide them entities to the taxpayers of Parker County. And with this beautiful new workforce building and everything that we got here, I know we're working to raise those additional funds. Dan's working out there at the Carter Property and what we can do. But it costs to run a facility like this. This is a beautiful thing, and I know the taxpayers of Parker County are proud of it. I've heard people say that there shouldn't be a question one what we're charging out here because of what we're doing. I think there's a lot of people out there that do realize that, of course, there's always some that don't agree with tax rates, period. So we know, so we know. And so that, in a couple of weeks, we'll have a hearing on the twenty-second, and that'll be the opportunity that they'll have to tell their story. And for those that we didn't invite, any of those that would like to tell the good side of the story also. Anymore for the Parker County at this time in taxes. The Wise County branch maintenance tax. We received information just this last week. They are up twenty-eight point nine percent on their valuations. They're currently at eleven billion, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred, two hundred and forty-one thousand. This represents a two billion, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand increase over the values in two thousand twenty-one for a total valuation of back in two thousand twenty-one, eight billion, nine hundred and sixty-five. So they had grown over three billion, right at three billion in this last year. I had emailed and tried to find out if they did reassess, if they reassess every year. I'm not certain. I never got a response. And so, Hank, I know you've got a brother up in that.
Yeah, I don't know if they do or not. Certainly.
But I may have received that. If I did, I'll let you know. But I have a feeling that that may be the case when it's up so much. The maintenance tax revenues, Anne McPuskin, the county auditor, she normally is, how we will send them a copy of our budget that's been developed. And they normally will come back and tell us what rate that they're going to set. They're telling, they're telling us, and this is not final. They haven't met, and they haven't approved. But our budget team, an increase of seven hundred and twenty-two thousand at a rate of point zero, three, seven, five. Now, to be honest, I sent for a worksheet from, since I didn't get that response back from the others. I sent for a worksheet from the tax office there, and I just received it before I came today. And it shows that that tax rate, it may not be flat that much because it shows the tax rate, the voter's approval rate was under that figure. And if that's the case, that means they've agreed to go above the eight percent. But I haven't had an opportunity to discuss it. If it doesn't materialize and it goes back down a little bit, we still have some reserve funds there that could offset, offset that. Okay, and moving to the changes in expenditures, moving on down to the second part of the presentation. I think about that charge that you all gave us in January and where our emphasis was supposed to be for our goals for the coming five years. And I think about where we touched on, I know those were things that were before us. I know there's a strong desire there for salary increases to get our salaries above that state average, which we're still quite a bit below this last year. I think we, I don't know if I brought that with me, but I've got a sheet here showing exactly where we stood in two thousand twenty-one. The average salary in twenty-one, twenty-two for Weatherford College was fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty for our faculty nine-month. The state average was fifty-eight, three ninety-six. And looking at that and trying to work on that, I try to look through the state and get, we run a lot of surveys and all that. There were only two, three colleges that were, we had one college that showed an eight percent increase that they were planning on giving just to our south here. There were a couple of more that were going to give six percent, I believe that was right. And then everything else was under that. So if I looked at this, at Weatherford College, and there's some colleges that aren't moving at all, I'll tell you that right now. But Weatherford College with a six, if you multiply it by one point on six, that would bring it to fifty-nine, oh, sixty-three. Of course, I know that average is going to go up too, but that would pull it above the state average for this last year of fifty-eight thousand, three ninety-three. So it would help that average salary. That's not every salary, but the average salary at this point.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I understood we're having T S A, T A S B do a salary profile for us?
Yes.
Where are we on that?
Dan Curley is working with them on that. He might want to answer that question for you.
We have a team's meeting coming up next week to talk to them about their preliminary findings, so they tell which way we're going. And that salary study should be in place before the end of August. So we'll have that to work with.
So will that impact this budget or will that be an amendment?
Well, so much, and I don't know. I have not been involved in this, but I know when that salary study comes back, and which we, TASB's done a one here for us before. They usually come back and they'll still have a formula. It's formula-driven, where we'll take and they'll give you a schedule, but you'll have to go back and work with those schedules and work with the positions to see maybe possibly where they will fall. And it takes a little while to apply. It doesn't, it's not something that's quickly done. I could be wrong, Dan, but I don't know that they'll come back with a list with every person with a salary there for you.
It should be very similar to what we got before. They'll have a lot of data in it about various strata of employees and qualifications and time in service. So you will have a scale to work with and would anticipate that it would be greater than the one we got some time back because we've been working outside that because of the changes and circumstances. But what we get back from them is recommendation and not a mandate that these will be the salaries you're going to pay. So we will have our own discretion, and if it impacts the budget, then we'll have to adjust the budget to accommodate that.
Any, is there any idea when you might propose that budget amendment? I mean, it's going to have to be budget.
We would only have, we'd only be able to do it after we're able to quantify its impact on the salary structure.
In this budget currently, we went ahead, and this is what we started with the first of the summer, was a recommendation of a five percent increase. That was before all of the inflation numbers had hit us so much. So every employee in this budget has been increased five percent, totaling eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand increase. That has included each full-time employee, and it also includes a reserve fund of two hundred and eighty thousand, which includes funds for bringing all classified and part-time individuals to fifteen dollars per hour.
I'm so excited to see that. I really think that's great. I know there are some part-time people that are making more than fifteen dollars an hour, aren't there? So are they getting any kind of a raise?
Well, they're getting a five percent for sure.
For part-time?
Every, the part-time too.
Oh, okay, great.
The reserve is there for the part-time. So when those, there'll be new rates given out, and when those part-time job notifications come through, they'll put the new rate on.
Great. That's wonderful. Thank you.
We also have put additional funds, three, in a lot of the inflation that has hit, we've put in additional funds of three hundred and seventy-three thousand allocated for further salary and benefit considerations that you all might have for us in moving forward. College work-study salaries will be increased to twelve dollars per hour. That was, came from a recommendation from financial aid. We were having a very difficult time filling those slots with those other people out in the marketplace that are making fifteen dollars an hour. They weren't wanting to work on campus, to be honest. So we had, we had a very slim list of college work-study employees this year. I was very shocked when I looked at it, just to see exactly how many we had, very slim. So we're hoping that will generate more college campus workers, but that will benefit us too in the long run. Adjunct and overload salaries have also been increased approximately sixty-seven thousand for a total of compensation increases in the budget of a million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. The major repairs or renovations have been budgeted at three million, two hundred and fifty thousand. That's an increase of a million, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars over last year's. About a million of that is for already obligated, the roofing project that will be coming back to you all in September, that was tabled in, or tabled in July. And then the seating for the gymnasium, that we weren't able to get that in for the summer. So it'll be increased for fall. It should be in December. Supplies were decreased by forty-five thousand overall. We've worked very hard and diligently to watch our expenses here. I know that travel has increased a little bit, but it went from nothing during the pandemic to where we are now. So people are beginning to travel just a little bit again. Equipment was reduced by three hundred and twenty-four thousand. And that's only because we had a huge amount of equipment that was lost last year when we purchased so much of the new technology equipment to go into the workforce building. So it did come down, but we still are at a very comfortable level. Technology Services Department alone was increased by two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Operating grants, as I've already spoke to you, was a decrease by Operating grants, as I've already spoke to you, was decreased by 7622 as a result of the Depleting Care Act. Now, some of these CARES Act funds, we had air conditioning budgeted, and they've been slow, that air conditioning's slow coming in. So at the end of this year, if we've not been able, we've still got some equipment that is back ordered, and if it's not here, they're telling us it's close, but also school is starting, so we, it may be pushed to September. And if it is, then amendment will come in later to push that to this coming year. But those CARES Act, the funds are approved to go into the next year, it was extended back in June, I believe, for the coming year. Auxiliary enterprise expenditure increased by 635,000. Athletic, and included in that area is athletic administration, equipment, a new associate trainer in athletics, volleyball program administrative expenses of 150,000. Food service was increased by 175. Dorm, additional 50,000 cost there. And our cafeteria insurance will go up greatly, because in the past, not very many of our food service workers had insurance also along, they had to pay their own. And so we're picking up that, we're proposing to pick that up this year. Performing scholarships increased by 106,742, and this was due to the 14 new volleyball students that they brought in, and three new rodeo scholarships that were added. And that rodeo scholarship was more or less to help offset the men and the women, where they would be more equal now. Utility show a reduction of 76,000. That's not totally true, but since we are not at the Minter Wells campus now, we're actually up 110,000 overall, when you pulled that Minter Wells campus off. The WCWC lease was decreased by 25,000, and that was because of the new bonding agreement that we passed last year. So it saved us 25,000 and went into the Wise County budget. And then the Wise County auxiliary increased of 94,910, and that's due to the institutional enrichment being transferred from the tuition. So that is transferred into your auxiliary funds. In summary, when I look at this and I think about it, I think we've done a very good job of meeting the goals that you all handed us in January. I looked at personnel when I, last week, when we were preparing the legislative appropriation request. It showed basically, when we look back over two bienniums, that we've cut personnel of 32 individuals over the last two, three bienniums. Thirty-two people, full-time people that were down. But we're still doing more work. We're increasing our enrollments, coming back, everybody's working really hard. But with that said, the compensation, we've chosen that we want to do the best we can for our people. And I think we've heard that from you all, we heard it from you all last time at the board meeting, and that's what, one of the main emphasis that we placed. The academic instruction, that includes the workforce, increased seven percent for approximately 560,000 overall. We added cardiovascular sonography this time, robotics, automated engineering, early childhood EAS, Mike, what else?
Evening nursing in Wise County. And additional in vocational. The vast majority of new positions are vocational, which is part of our design.
And those are shown throughout the budget. Are there any questions that I could answer this time for you all? I know probably I've got some homework to go back and do for him, and I'm glad to, I just don't always know what every number to bring and be prepared for, but I'll be glad to look up anything.
I have one quick question, back on the tax rate. So I think you said it represents a 5.2 increase?
Over the.
The non-revenue rate?
Uh huh.
Right. The last couple of years, haven't we been right under the eight percent threshold?
Yes, we did.
Like 7.9 or more or less? Do you remember that?
We wanted, I mean, working with Dr. Farmer and ourselves, we tried very hard not to increase that tax rate, to be honest. And at this time, we felt like that this was making some concession, but with the funds that they were providing us, that this would help offset our expenses.
Sure, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, I noticed community education, that particular number is, it's not changing up or down.
Now, we're exactly.
Community education on expenses in the budget 2021, 22.
Is that page?
That's on page three. Everything else was moving up and down, but community education.
Mike, you might want to speak to that.
We divide up our educational programs by academic, workforce, and community ed. Community ed is continuing education that is not for credit hour, and it doesn't fluctuate much. It's the smallest area that we operate in, and it's really personal enrichment courses, defensive driving, how to manage your money. It doesn't fluctuate much for us. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
What else? I have another question on grants. So typically, when we receive a grant, more or less, many times it's already earmarked for something specific.
It's restricted.
Okay, that's.
So revenue in will be revenue out. There's sometimes there's a grant that comes in that will allow us to pay for tuition and fees for students. It's not all.
Yeah, earmarked.
Right.
Okay.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you help me reconcile on the major sheet, student aid revenues of 12 million three, and expensive of 14 million eight? How do we cover that delta?
Some of those, let me see. Student aid. Okay, student aid also has, let's see, Stafford loans that they're receiving.
Stafford.
Right, that's what that difference is.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
One interesting figure I did have, that I thought you all might be interested in, the total salaries in this budget amounted 32.5% of the total budget, which I think is outstanding. Thank you.
Ballpark on the CARES funding that we received at Weatherford College, what's a ballpark number for that that we got?
Oh, I've got that somewhere, I promise you. I can find it now. We had operating grants to come in of 10 million 493, let's see. I think there was about 12 million dollars that we received on that, and then the students were about, about 14. Student aid, does that answer?
That helped a lot, didn't it?
Yes, it did. And it, you know, we are still here to get to see, because we were able to use a lot of those funds to students that weren't able to pay for their tuition fees always, or either they had outstanding debts to the college. If they came in unranked, we cleaned up the dorms, delinquent dormitories, and things like that with it. So it helped a lot. We should look good in the audit in the year, because we, the collections ended up very well because of that. But a lot of the students carried funds away from, you know, with them too for support also.
Just thought that was worth noting.
Thank you.
I guess one thing that I'm, that I just, you know, this is kind of anecdotal, but I, the property taxable value trend information, it shows 1617 was really the only year in the last, basically, 10 years, nine or 10 years, where we've actually had something that's fairly level, or maybe just a slight decrease. And then over that period of time, I guess from 19 up to 23, it's just a huge increase. And so, you know, sometimes I wonder, looking into the future, what does that really mean for our budget downstream? We, we get so much advantage from the property taxable values that are increasing so much, and so I just.
Well, Mike, I think we've been very fortunate this time to be able to keep it at a flat rate.
Yes, yes.
But right now, we're looking at that major repair and rehabilitation. I know we've got a new beautiful building here, we've been able to remodel and build two other buildings, but we've got some other buildings that are aging.
Yeah.
That I have to take care of. I'm going to, and even in these funds, I'm having to build in a schedule for replacement that wasn't necessarily there. I mean, I think we, long-term, until we can pass that general obligation bond, as we all know, is needed. But we've got to take care of our roofs, we've got some aging roofs, we're replacing the first one this fall, and there may be another one, I'm going to have a assessment, we're having an assessment done on all the roofs. There's some staircases that we're looking at again, once again, it's been 10 years since we, and we've had them to come out and start looking at those, and two of those are going to have to be replaced, I know. So with all of it said and done, yes, our community is growing, but so are the expectation and the needs of the taxpayers for an educational entity. We're providing now, we're coming in, we're providing four-year degrees for them, so many of the things that are beneficial to them. But with that said, this growth on one side, and the revenue is growing, but the needs are also growing, and expenditures to keep up with the needs of the community.
Dr. Farmer, any questions or comments from you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have to tell you that I am exceedingly pleased that in the face of 9.1% inflation, that Dr. Cantrell and the entire team has developed a balanced budget that holds the tax rate flat. I think that is a job well done, and I commend you.
Yeah, and just to go along with what Mac said, this year is a reappraisal year.
Yes, I know.
And I've heard 30% is probably the typical, that values are going to go up, 30% of $20 billion is what's probably going to happen this year, I've heard. So we've got to think about that, this time next year.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
But that no new revenue and all that kind of keeps you in reality. There's a movement in there that you can, but you can't go above that eight percent hardly without jeopardizing. Thank you very much for talking to me. Once again, if there's anything you all see later, give me a call, my straight line, and I'll be glad to, if I don't know the answer right off, I'll give it for you.
Thank you, Dr. Cantrell. Okay, we'll move to agenda item four, closed session, and you see the posted agenda for A, B, and C. So we'll adjourn right now and head back to our, to our area to conduct that closed session, and thank you very much.
We're back from our closed session. It's time now about 3:31. So we will resume our open session, call the meeting back to order. We do still have a quorum. So we'll move to agenda item number five, consideration possible action real property. There are no discussions or action items actually needed on number five. Same thing on number six as posted. So we move to number seven. And I'll ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
A summary.
There's second.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.